...interviews has to disclose that conflict of interest and then does not participate in the process.
And with that, we thank you again for your time and your diligence always.
You're very welcome. Okay, move to item five on the agenda, which is the consent agenda. The following items will be enacted by one motion unless a councilor or citizen of the city of Virginia requests that the item be considered separately. Item 5.1 is the approval and correction of the minutes of the regular meeting that was held on September 26, 2023, and the public hearing minutes that was held on September 26, 2023. Item 5.2 is the adoption of finance resolution number 23-019, the schedule of bills. Item 5.3, approve the travel request for Jesse McIntyre to attend the solid waste landfill operator training on October 25, 2023, in Grand Rapids, Minnesota at a cost of $240. Item 5.4 is adopt resolution for final pay estimate number 18 for the 2021 street improvement project, Casper Engineering, in the amount of $262,485.21. These are the consent agenda items on the regular schedule here for consideration, looking for council action. Councilor Barnzeli, are you moving to approve the consent agenda? Councilor Barnzeli moves to approve the consent agenda. Is there support by Councilor Freely? Is there any further discussion? Councilor Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to pull item 5.4 for further consideration.
Thank you. Councilor Paulson requests I move item 5.4 for the further consideration, looking for a motion to approve 5.1, 2, and 3. Motion to approve is 5, 1, 2, and 3. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Item 5.4, the resolution for final pay estimate number 18 for the 2021 street improvement project to Casper Construction. Councilor Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. In light of the discussion that we just had regarding the assessments for, I guess, third and eighth, or whatever the street is there, yeah, third and eighth, with some issues maybe still seem to be left unresolved with some of the completion of the project, although they did the punch list, I don't know if we could withhold 10% from the final payment, if that's a possibility.
Elie, S.C.H., Elie.
Yes, there is a one-year project warranty that comes with this project, once it's completed.
Does that start with, after we approve the final payment? There's one year?
Yep.
Okay.
Once final payment is made, there's a one-year project.
So, I guess what I'd like, I really do want those concerns addressed, you know, with the, it would be the sod issue, the driveway issue, the not filling the dirt all the way up to the curb, causing a tripping hazard. So, do we need to make a list of what we want identified to be discussed with Casper to look back into? And what kind of threshold or criteria? And/or if we approve this final payment, does that mean there will be no satisfaction going forward?
Britt, Brian?
Thank you, Mayor. So, the one-year warranty period is an important, is an important aspect. Essentially, they're obligated to make the city whole on the project for that year. So, essentially, the way that it would work would be this. We can make the final pay application, we give them a list of things that we believe breached the warranty that they owe us or unsatisfactory, we ask them to correct those things. If they don't, then they've breached that warranty, and then we talk about the actual, you know, recouping from them the actual costs of corrections.
Okay, so that, so we would, you would, what we need to do then is release the final payment, assess what the corrections need to be, or they need to assess that, and what happens if the city has to make the residents whole and we've already paid Casper in full?
Mayor, if I may.
Yes, Brian?
In theory, the city then could go back to Casper and say, these are obligations you should have had, this is work that wasn't completed pursuant to the warranty, and we're going to ask you to reimburse the city. Oftentimes, what happens is, is when a contractor finds out that that's a potential or a real potential, they'll get involved to try and take care of things because what they want to do is try and control the costs of, of making the corrections, because if the city has to go out and contract to make those corrections separately, the cost may get much higher.
Okay, thank you for that, Brian. So, I guess I, we have to approve that, but is there a separate motion that can be made then to look into having those warranty discussions? We would need the residents to submit issues, correct?
Correct. And we could put something out to the residents that you have, that till this date to let us know any concerns you have with this project, please contact us, we're going to notify Casper, and then go from there.
Okay, so I'm comfortable then moving forward as long as we're doing a parallel track. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Paulson. So, has it been a motion to adopt item 5.4? Looking for that motion. Council Johnson moves to approve item 5.4. Is there support by Councilor Biondich? Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Move to item six, appearances. We have two appearances scheduled for this evening. The first, item under 6.1, is Michael Jerick from Jerick and Associates to discuss the lobbyist contract with the city of Virginia with a resolution in your packet. Mr. Jerick, welcome. Thanks for taking the drive up from the, from Modota Heights.
It was in Duluth.
In Duluth, okay, very good, okay. Well, thanks for bringing it up from Duluth, so.
Thanks for having me. I'm Mike Jerick with Jerick and Associates. I know I sent out a list of, like, our accomplishments, and the one thing I forgot on there was the sales tax exemption for the public safety building on all construction material. I don't know what that number adds up to, but I'm, I'm bad about that.
Significant, yeah.
Also, I have the, the bonding request that the city wants to renovate this building a little bit with new windows and a few other things, that we can get language drafted really quick and when session starts, Paul Rowland and work with Senator.
Senator Udall?
Arnsworth. And.
A little closer to the mic, a little closer to the mic.
Oh, and representing these guys.
Senator Farnsworth.
Yes. And we can get that drafted real quick and see, we'll see what the, what the, last year they did a really big bonding bill, which we got some cash for the public safety building. And so, we'll see what the mood is. Right now, they're kind of butting heads over some of the marijuana legislation that needs some fixing, the school resource officer, which is a big deal with all the communities as officers are pulling out, and so kind of see what happens there. And it doesn't look like there's going to be a special session for that, there should be, but we'll see. And then, where the, where the bonding goes, because they need a super majority to pass it, so, certain number of Republican votes. Won't know, they spent all the surplus, so we won't know what, how we're doing until the November forecast comes out, and that'll tell us a lot. There were tax increases, so I'm projecting, I personally, I think that our number's going to be pretty high, and I, I think they should do another bonding bill. They skipped a few years. The last one was really big, there's a lot of projects out there that still need funding. Do you have any questions, concerns?
The one question that I have is regarding EMS. I know we had talked about that before, so if you could address that a little bit about where we're going and what, what track we can do to help there.
Yeah, you know, that's one thing that, I can see how it's a big problem, where your, your services are covering a lot of, a large area, and I think that would take some brainstorming with, you know, we got, there's really, really good staff at the Capitol that can help work through this, and we can talk about it and, and come up with either a solution, a bill, whatever, you know, as, I think you said the other communities would have to vote to increase their own taxes, so, yeah, that's, that's tough. So, I think a better solution would be to see if the legislature could maybe throw some money at it, you know? I mean, they could pass laws, they can do whatever they want, and hopefully, you know, solve the problem, not just a budget problem for the city, but also, I mean, if I lived 20 minutes from here, 20 miles from here, in a different community, I would want EMS, you know, if something happened. My wife comes from a small town in northeastern North Dakota where they don't have that, and basically, it's volunteer firefighters that show up. We've had her uncle had a heart attack last year, you know, when we were there, we've been there when her cousin fell off a horse, and the response time is slow, you know, and it's, and it's very rural, but I would rather have the professionals try to save me, you know, that are trained, not that they're not professionals, they're just don't have the same training.
Councilor, have any questions for Mr. Jerick? Council Biondich.
Thank you for coming, and I know that you had been here a year or two ago, and we had talked, but I think one of our largest concerns, or my concern, is, is our ambulance and our EMS and the large area that they cover and the reimbursement costs back to the city. It's really tough to kind of keep your head above water, and I know we had talked of having that a priority to be working on, to see what, what we can do. We've tried, you know, I've been on a shared fire service with Mount Nayarier that it's, it's hard to get traction from other communities when we, we support and supply everything from here, and the reimbursement just isn't enough to cover the cost of rolling that rig out of the garage. So, for me personally, I would really like to see work done on how we can do this, how can we engage or, or get reimbursement back for, because our, our department is so important to this community, and we want to continue to have them and support them in any way we can. So, it's, it's reaching out to higher government on how we can do this. So, that would be, that would be my, my push, is to help our department. Thank you.
To the best of my knowledge, I don't know that that conversation's ever been had at the Capitol for other communities, you know, so it'd be a good start, and sometimes when you're first, you get the most.
And I would love to come down and see that in action. Thank you.
And last month, when we, we had a chance to meet at Giants Ridge there, and we talked about the rural EMS services and the 2002 Department of Health study about rural ambulance at risk, and nothing was ever done, and I know you and, and your partner Valerie, your mother Valerie, is acutely aware of that, and this is something that we're going to carry forward until the next legislative session with that document in hand, and, you know, as, as a, almost like a book to, I don't want to say Bible, but it's like, it's the conduit of the issues that we're having up here as Council Biondich brought forth. Council Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mike, so much for coming up and, and taking some time. We're trying to justify, can we afford to pay you again this next budget cycle because we are in such a tight crunch? So, I do appreciate you coming forward because I think where I was coming from is it's not a bonding year.
It is a bonding year.
It is a bonding year.
Yes.
Okay, so then that.
Typically.
Typically.
But they don't always play by their own rules.
Well, right, and you would know that, so, right. But, so I think part of, you know, us inviting you to come was just to kind of discuss some of our priorities, and I definitely think our number one priority is that, definitely the ambulance and the situation there. And you've really helped us out in the past with having those conversation starters, and, you know, some of the things that we've done haven't been done before either, so, you know, I really appreciate the work that you've been doing, and I appreciate your time in coming here tonight. So, I think that's justified the, the allocation that, that your company has paid, because I do see it's such a huge benefit for what your company brings to the city of Virginia. So, on behalf of myself, thank you for that. The one question that I did have was regarding the SRO. Is your thought process that that is actually not going to be visited at all because there is so much non-agreement on that issue?
I don't believe it'll be addressed in a special session. That being said, something tragic could happen and change that. Sure it'll be addressed next session when it starts in February, so, hopefully it's not too late.
We're trying to, we're putting our budget together with including a full-time SRO at the ISD 2909 School, and that runs obviously into 24, you know, they overlap in their, in their academic year. So, just kind of that budget planning and where you maybe think that might go, but if you, as you get information about that, if you could relay that to the council, I would greatly appreciate that going forward, and thank you again for coming, appreciate it.
Grabbing up here.
Thank you, Council Paulson. Any other questions for Mr. Jerick?
Mayor.
Yes, Council Freely.
I would like to make a motion to approve the continuing contract with Jerick and Associates as our lobbyist.
The motion by Council Freely to approve the one-year contract with Jerick and Associates for lobbying services, is there support by Council Bionzeli? Is there any further discussion? Council Johnson.
Mayor, appreciate you coming up to your mic, and it's nothing personal, but if it comes between employing you and employing one of our already folks here, I'm going to have to go with one of our folks, so I will not be supporting this.
Okay, thank you, Council Johnson. It has been moved and supported to approve one-year contract with Jerick and Associates for lobbying services. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Roll call, please, Pam.
Johnson?
No.
Bionzeli?
Yes.
Puffy?
Aye.
Motley?
Yes.
Freely?
Aye.
Paulson?
Aye.
Biondich?
Aye.
Motion passes 6 to 1. Thank you. Thanks for coming up, Mr. Jerick. I know we have a contract, we have a resolution in the packet. Do we have to approve that resolution now? Vern, that's part of the motion to pass a resolution to hire? Okay, so, thank you. Thank you, Mike. We, I think we have a contract, I think we need, I don't know if you have that available now or not, you can have him sign that.
I'll send it out.
He'll send it out. Thank you, Mr. Jerick, for coming in. Thanks for making the trip up. I'll move to item 6.2 on the agenda, Pat Wertz from Carl Sanderson regarding the public safety center update and potentially approve the contract for abatement of the remaining properties in the public safety area finally. Mr. Wertz?
Hi.
And your, and your partner is?
Carly Ridgeway.
You guys might remember me a couple of years ago.
Yes, I remember.
It's been a while.
I remember. Carly Ridgeway, yes, thank you, welcome.
Thanks for having us. So, I think the first thing I want to go through, and I plan on coming back to the committee, the whole meeting on Tuesday to discuss overall project budget and discuss a couple of items on that for public safety, because that'll stand probably a larger, or larger, longer conversation. So, one thing we want to get approved was IEA, Environmental, well, Institute for Environmental Assessment, Taylor Dickinson had put together some quotes originally back, they'd hired Mabel to do the abatement down 17 houses, but then they didn't bid out all their previous houses because they weren't owned by the city of Virginia yet, so they solicited other bids, received three bidders for it, and so they got quotes for the remaining properties of value of $116,600 from EnviroBait, thus to bait the remaining houses so all the rest of the houses can be demoed. So, that's what we're looking to get approved tonight, and then that would take care of all the rest of the abatement for the properties still on the site.
So, once this is approved, Pat, what is the timeframe for, for the abatement be to complete and, and demolition to continue?
So, they will start abating, it would be either next week or on October 23rd prior to the approval, and then it'd be done by November 20th, then the houses to go back, so once they give them a two-week head start, TNT will be back on site around roughly the November 1st in that timeframe to remain, to remove the remaining houses.
November 1st?
Correct, yep.
Thank you. Questions? Council Paulson.
Thank you. Pat, does this, um, thank you, and good to see you smiling. I love it. Does this, is this included in our budget? Were we expecting about this approximate cost?
Yes, well.
For this abatement?
Not exactly approximate cost, we had a value plugged in for abatement to go back.
This is a little higher because of winter conditions. We didn't plan for this to be this late in the year, so the costs are a little more higher than we expected. We expect to be closer to the 79, 80, well, probably 90,000, so this is a little bit more increased.
There's ephes and some stucco, it's probably stucco actually, they asked if we abated.
Yeah, the stucco is causing a problem, yeah.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, so the line item above there, and I, Pat, we just got these tonight, so you've got it highlighted in yellow, 116,600.
Yep.
Asbestos removal price at the, right above that line item, the line item right above that, it's 79, 840.
Correct.
That was 17, the first 17 houses, and then the 116s, all the remaining properties.
Okay, so that's been.
The 79's been suspended, yep, that's done.
Have those actually been demoed and done?
Yes.
The 17, yes.
So, 17 are actually gone.
17 are gone.
The remaining properties that are still standing are, what, how many of them again?
It's approximately 20, over the exact number was 20.
Like that, yeah. 20?
20 remaining, correct.
And when would demo begin on these?
On November 1st in that ballpark.
And that, that, that includes all the removal, all the rubble and?
Goes back up. The abatement would start either next week or a week of October 23rd, depending on long this, if we get approval tonight, and then Taylor's going to reach out to EnviroBait, Taylor's with IEA, so that's where she's going to try to get them to go next week, and then if not, it'd be the week of October 23rd, but regardless, it'd be complete by the week of November 20th. So, then if we give them a little bit of head start, so when TNT can demo houses fast and they can abate, that's a slower process. So, then they start around November 1st in that timeframe, and then they'll be able to catch back up, so basically by December 1st, the site will be, have no houses left.
Okay, and I'm glad about that, I'm sure the neighbors will be glad about that.
Yeah.
What about the debris and the removal of that debris? Because there's, there's concrete back there that's, I've watched as I've driven by, there's still kids crawling on that and other people in that, I don't know if they're getting back there from.
They're probably going through the drainage ditch back around the fence.
Maybe, yeah, I'm not sure, but I just, I have seen children playing in there, and I just want to make sure that if this happens, that they're going to remove everything and it's going to be a leveled surface.
Will be correct, and that's one thing, go back for next Tuesday to come back and we're discussing more of the site going back, but yes, for now, it will be flat, so all the debris will be removed when they get done this time.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you, Mayor.
So, if we're going to move forward to approve this, we'll have to waive the written resolution because there isn't one intact. So, if we're going to do, we'd have to waive the written resolution to approve the abatement of these homes. Any questions, comments, or any additional information regarding the request on this abatement for the remaining properties in the public safety area? Council Johnson?
I was going to say I'll move with waiver, written resolutions to approve the bid from Enviro, EnviroBait.
Yep, EnviroBait.
Council Johnson moves to approve and waive the written resolution for the awarding of the contract to EnviroBait for the abatement of the remaining homes in the public safety area, is there support?
I'll support for discussion.
By Council Bionzeli, and further discussion, Council Freely.
So, is this still within the acquisition, budgeted acquisition monies then? I mean, we have not exceeded the acquisition costs that we had budgeted for.
Not to my knowledge, but Britt would probably be able to answer that.
The demolition costs are different than the acquisition costs. We're still in phase one, we're still working under the state funding, which covered everything from acquisition to demolition to site prep.
So, this is an additional $36,760 then was anticipated.
Correct.
And, but, so, is that meaning we're going to have to look in another pocket to get that money, or is that still in the pocket we're reaching into?
Pat and I had a phone call today, and we did find that we had legal fees doubled on the, so we're fine.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Long story short, we're fine.
Yeah.
Thank you. It has been moved and supported to waive the written resolution and approve the abatement contract to Environment. Is there, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Pat.
We'll see you next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
Thank you, Britt.
Yep, I know.
Okay, move to item number seven, unfinished business, the clinic lease. Any movement or any additional information to disseminate today, Britt? We're still having some conversations here, keeping the lives of communication open, Brian?
We are, Mayor. In fact, I anticipate I'll have, we'll have another meeting this coming Friday.
Very good, thank you. Anything else on the clinic lease? Okay, move to item eight, discussion items, item 8.1, adopt a resolution to spread the assessments on phase one of the 2022 street improvement project.
Move to table for further information as discussed earlier.
Council Johnson moves to approve, is there support?
I moved to table.
Sir, I didn't hear you, I apologize.
Moved to table.
Council Johnson moves to table. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Council Paulson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Move to item nine, committee reports, item 9.1, the committee, the whole meeting.
Mayor.
I'm sorry, yes, Council Freely.
And this is not to continue discussions, I know that that's not allowed, but should be set a meeting to make sure that we have determined what we're going to do, because we are on a timeline.
Yeah, we're in a tight timeframe.
That's not further discussion on the issue, it's just.
We could certainly make it. We could take another, so that's your motion to set another date?
Please.
To discuss this?
Yes.
And it has to be within a certain period of time, right? By what?
Because whatever, if we make changes to the formulas, we have to have S.C.H. redo the spreadsheets, and then we have to redo the notices, so there's prep time.
So, so if the, well, if the motion comes forth, then, and it's supported, and we move forward, is it, is it that we can waive, or it's not changing the policy, even if we waive, still has to be redone by S.C.H.?
Yeah, if you were to, if you change the formula at all, they have to redo those, that whole packet.
Okay, so that's moved by Council Freely, is there support?
I'll support.
I'll support by Council Paulson.
For discussion.
Sure, any further discussion? Council Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. Could we add that to the committee, the whole agenda and discuss it at that time? Would that be amicable to everybody? That the soonest we could probably do it, Tuesday?
Put on the agenda for next Tuesday? Motion is support to discuss this further at the committee, the whole meeting on next Tuesday. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Move to item nine, committee reports, item 9.1, the committee, the whole meeting that was held on October 3, 2023, and we'll turn the rest of the agenda over to our city administrator, Britt C. Benis. Britt?
Thank you. At this. October 3, committee, the whole meeting, we had Matt Reed from S.C.H. there to discuss two change orders for the Alka entrance project. The pillars needed to be relocated for an increase of $3,100, and the other was a decrease of $3,837 to move the power for a total overall contract decrease of $737. It was moved and supported to approve change order number two.
Moved by Council Freely to approve, supported by Council Motley, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Matt presented information regarding the quitclaim deed with Del Schnabel. This will allow us a permanent right-of-way easement for Sixth Avenue North where his property comes out to a point from 12th Street North. It was moved and supported to approve the quitclaim deed with Del Schnabel for the Sixth Avenue Northeastment.
Moved.
Moved by Council Paulson, supported by Council Biondich, is there any further discussion?
Here's a quick question.
Yeah, sure.
Was there cost incurred with regard to that?
What we did agree to was we are going to be, when we redo the street, we are going to be taking out part of his retaining wall, we agreed to put it back.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Sorry, my computer froze. It was moved and supported to approve the real estate agreement with U S Steel contingent upon reviewing the insurance information and further discussion.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Paulson, is there support?
All support.
Support by Counselor Freedle, is there any further discussion? Counselor Johnson?
Can we know what that additional information was with the insurance, what, what happened with that?
Yes, Pam?
Thank you, Mayor, I have not received any other information on that as of yet. They are seeking other quotes for the additional coverage, but I have not heard back on the cost.
Okay, thank you, moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Okay, roll call please, Pam.
Aaron Zelli?
Aye.
Motley?
Yes.
Freedle?
Aye.
Paulson?
No.
Yandich? Johnson?
No.
Motion passes five-two. I'd like to go back if I may, I just had a conversation with Pam and made a good point about setting, discussing that motion at the next committee of the home meeting with respect to the two thousand, two thousand twenty-one assessment. If we do discuss it at the next committee of the home meeting, then we'll have to wait for the next council meeting in order to approve. And so does that put us in a bad timeframe, or should we just set a special meeting to accomplish that?
We could set a special meeting at nine o'clock and just have the committee of the home meeting after the special meeting.
Could we, okay, do we, do we have to amend a motion for that, just set it?
No, I think that's fine, I think we'll be okay.
All right, thank you, and thanks for bringing that up, Pam.
Thanks, Pam.
Appreciate it, okay, we're good, all right, thank you. Next item.
The next item was to, moved and supported to move the approval of the ATV trail indemnity and release agreement between City of Virginia and the Quad Cities ATV Club, contingent upon reviewing the insurance information and further discussion.
Do we just, do we?
We did the first one with U S Steel, the second one is the Quad Cities ATV Club.
Okay, very good, thank you.
I'll make the motion.
Counselor Motley makes a motion to approve, is there support? Support by Counselor Freedle, is there any further discussion? Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor, and I, the reason I voted no on the other item was because I really wanted to have that information, the insurance and the financial information on the insurance. So I, I feel like we're putting the cart before the horse and approving before we have that information, so I, I mean, I'm all in favor of this, I'm not, not in favor, I'm all in favor, I just wanted the documentation prior to approval, so on this one, I'm probably going to say no as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and I, I get where you're coming from, but the term contingent upon makes me want to say yes, so it has been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Counselor Biondich.
Bringing up that point, how would that relate to this motion? The first one was for, with U S Steel?
Mm-hmm.
And this one is for the ATV?
Yep, and that's the agreement where they're going to hold us harmless, they're going to have insurance, it's going to name us and they're going to pay for the insurance that we, that we incur a cost on. And if at any time they don't pay for the insurance, we don't pay U S Steel and we get rid of that agreement, so it's, it's the twofold, to protect the city.
So this, this one protects the city?
Yes, and very clearly defines to the Quad Cities ATV Club that they are going to be responsible for the insurance and if they don't pay for it, we are going to drop the license agreement and the trail will be, will be gone.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor, and I will be supporting this, I feel like this one should have come first before the other one, but I will be supporting this because I do, I agree with that we need the trail and it'll be great, so I think we'll, we'll get the answers we need eventually.
Oh, thank you, so it has been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor, so just to clarify on this agreement though, they're, they're agreeing to pay whatever the price is of the insurance, but we don't know that dollar amount yet.
Correct, so we can't.
And they, okay, Pam's shaking her head, they have not agreed to pay that.
We don't know.
Yeah, so how can we make an agreement when we don't know?
They have agreed to pay.
But they don't know the dollar amount.
I don't think they care. They get D and R funding to pay for that, so that's, we just want it in a solidified agreement that says that they are going to pay it for us.
I know, I know they have the funds, they had, they came and said they had a half a million dollars in the bank, but I just, I think that we're doing this without having a quotation of the costs involved, I, I just am not comfortable with that, I support this a hundred percent, I just, the process, in my opinion, is backwards, so thank you, I guess.
Sure, thank you. It has been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Roll call please, Pam.
Puffy?
Aye.
Motley?
Yes.
Freedle?
Aye.
Paulson?
No.
Yandich? Johnson?
Yes.
Aaron Zelli?
Aye.
Motion passes six-one, thank you.
It was moved and supported to approve the quote for flooring at the Virginia Public Library in the amount of fifty-eight thousand, one hundred fifty-nine dollars and twenty-four cents using the state bid from Hiller Commercial Flooring with funds available through the two thousand twenty-three G O charter bond.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Counselor Johnson, is there support? Support by Counselor Biondich, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the resolution for the wastewater treatment facility SCADA server replacement from In-Control Systems in the amount of forty-four thousand, twenty-eight dollars.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Counselor Johnson, supported by Counselor Biondich, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the one-year managed services agreement with Pantheon Computers beginning September first, two thousand twenty-three.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Counselor Johnson, I'm sorry, one moment, Pam?
Yes, sorry, there is a resolution in the packet, so it would be to adopt the resolution.
Or is for the last one, for the SCADA?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay, there's, okay, there's a motion of support to approve with the resolution in the packet.
I'll move the resolution.
Okay, Counselor Johnson moves to approve the resolution, is there support?
Right.
By Counselor Motley, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the purchase of audio visual equipment for the request by the Cable Commission in the amount of eleven thousand, fifty-one dollars and ninety-four cents from B and H Thodo Video.
Moved to approve.
Or, moved to approve by Counselor Paulson and supported by Counselor Johnson, is there any further discussion? Counselor Freedle?
Quick question, what, what is this for and where is it being placed?
They're buying new cameras, HD cameras, tripods.
Who?
The Cable Commission.
To use where?
Wherever they need it, the Cable Commission uses, does the game filming, the city council filming, the, those types of things.
Virginia public events, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
We had discussion on the budget and there was a motion to set a meeting for three o'clock today, and then there was a further motion to request the chair of the insurance committee to schedule a meeting.
Is there any need to approve this?
I don't know that we need to, no. Brian's shaking his head.
We do not, thank you, next item.
It was moved and supported for staff to reach out to Isaac Sports Group for a quote on updated financial performatory for the Iron Trail Motors Event Center.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Motley and supported by?
All support.
Counselor Paulson, further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, I'm sorry, Counselor Freedle?
I know we're just seeking a quote and to get some updated figures from what we originally had, but I really think that Brian is probably best suited to be able to give us the kind of facts and, I mean, data that we're seeking, he's got firsthand knowledge in terms of like what we're looking for in that building, but I'm fine with going ahead and seeing what it would cost for an update, but I would suggest Brian being, certainly be involved with the Isaac Sports Group at least, thank you.
Thank you. Moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Roll call please.
Yes.
Freedle?
Aye.
Paulson?
Aye.
Yandich? Johnson?
No.
Aaron Zelli?
Aye.
Puffy?
This is just to get quotes, right?
Correct.
Aye. Motion passes six-one, could we go back to item I?
Item I was the chair, the insurance?
Do we, don't, request to set insurance, committee to schedule insurance meeting? Okay, okay, they're going to schedule, okay, I apologize, thank you.
Okay.
All right.
It was moved and support, we had a discussion regarding filling positions that are vacant right now currently, it was removed and supported to fill the one lead recreation assistant position at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Counselor Johnson, is there support? Support by Counselor Freedle, is there any further discussion? Yeah, I'm sorry, I apologize, supported by Counselor Barnzeli, you don't look alike, Counselor Barnzeli, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the hiring of the library clerk technology position.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Counselor Johnson, is there support? Support by Counselor Barnzeli, is there any further discussion? Counselor Motley?
So I will not be supporting this and I just want to state why, currently, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe currently in, or at the library, we have seven full-time employees, two part-time, two casual and one intern for a total of twelve. Okay, and the reason I can't support any more hires right now at the library in light of the current budget, I'm going to bring in the great city of Hibbing, for an example, twice the population, over sixteen thousand to our eighty-two hundred roughly, they have six full-time employees, six, we have seven full-time, two part-time, two casual and one intern, so I just wanted to state that for this council, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Motley, so it has been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor, again, I just want to have a clarification, where this is spending money, it's, it's a position, it's a new, it's a new position.
The reclassification of a position that was already, the library clerk was already there, we just changed the job title and the job description and reduced the wage.
Okay.
The library clerk was already, has been budgeted for years.
Thank you.
Point of order, Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Johnson?
We're on nine-one K, which is a lead rec assistant, not the library.
We already did the lead rec.
Did we?
We did that.
I apologize, it's catchy, Mayor, it's very catchy.
I'm, I'm with you, Counselor Johnson, I'm with you, okay, thank you.
But I do have comment on the library as well.
Okay, please, comment.
I have been in both libraries and the library in Hibbing has one central desk at one central entrance, very easy to staff differently, comparing the two buildings is, it's, it's like comparing our fire department to the Pike Sandy Britt Volunteer Fire Department, there is zero comparison in the services provided and what we do, and the library again is, is a place that is utilized by anybody at any time for any reason, so not filling that position will severely impact folks who have limited resources, so I, I think that we need to continue to support our library and people in our community who do not have access to, to anything, some of them, and, and support our staff in the phenomenal job they do there.
Okay, thank you, any further discussion? First Counselor Freedle, but then I'll back over to Counselor Motley, Counselor Freedle?
So quick clarification, this is an existing position that's been retitled?
Yep, with a pay decrease.
With a pay decrease, but it's a on-staff person?
We've always had a library clerk, that used to be called library clerk media, we changed it to library clerk technology and reduced the wage.
Thank you.
Counselor Motley?
I just want to reiterate, Hibbing has twice the taxpayers and they have half the staff in their library, at what point are we going to slow down on spending in this city? It's, it has to stop, it, it's not fair to the taxpayers, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Motley, so it has been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call please.
No.
Freedle?
Aye.
Paulson?
No.
Yandich?
Yes.
Aaron Zelli?
Yes.
Puffy?
No.
I, yeah, three, four, so I'd like to make a comment, it's not that I don't think they, that they deserve the position to have it done, but, you know, we have to decide where we're going to be at and I don't think we should just not fulfill a position ever, but I should, we should wait until the end of the year, see where we're at and revisit that position, I'm not saying that we should eliminate altogether, but to revisit and some of these other positions that we're going to be talking about later on down the road, same thing, and I understand the issues there and I don't know how hard this library works and I know how many programs that they provide and, and Counselor Johnson will make some valid points, but, so, it's four-three, did not pass, next item.
It was moved and supported to hire a mechanic for the Public Works Department.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Counselor Motley, is there support? Is there support?
All support for discussion.
Support by Counselor Freedle for discussion, further discussion, Counselor Freedle?
Well, this is not an existing position, it's one that needs to be filled.
It's an existing position, we've always had five, we have not filled this position since the employee got hurt about three years ago.
And Jim did say that we have been contracting out for large-scale jobs, that if we had this position in place, we would be saving money on contracting out, so.
Correct, and we're not doing any preventive maintenance yet on any of our snow equipment because we don't have enough staff, no one's coming.
And I did see, I thought somewhere that like for other services, Public Works had already budgeted, what, forty thousand dollars, or was it that much, something like that?
Mm-hmm.
That would offset this cost then, or potentially be able to use that money elsewhere? All right, thank you.
Okay, this position has been moved and supported for approval, is there further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
It was moved and supported to approve filling the parking monitor position.
Part-time position, up to twenty hours a week, flexible schedule, and you indicated earlier at the committee of the home meeting that this position pays for itself through, through fees and enforcement?
Correct.
Thank you. Counselor Biondich moves to approve, is there support?
All support for discussion.
Is there support by Counselor Freedle for further discussion? Further discussion, Counselor Freedle?
I thought we had been given some data last week that indicated that over the course of the last five years, this position did not produce revenue, it actually was about five thousand dollars of expenditures over revenue, if I recall correctly.
Position hasn't been fulfilled continuously for the last five years.
And I, you know, I agree with Scott that, you know, there's, needs to be something done to try and keep the streets clear, and so for the sake of public safety, as opposed to revenue production, I'm gonna support this, but I do have some reluctance with regard to the position. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. It has been moved and supported to approve filling the parking monitor position, a part-time position up to 20 hours a week. It's moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve a parade permit for the fifth annual Twilight Holiday Parade to be held on November 18th, 2023.
So moved. Moved to approve by Counselor Motley. Is there support?
Support.
By Counselor Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
No further items from that meeting.
Thank you. Item 10, Commission Liaison Reports. Does any Counselor have a liaison report they'd like to provide today? Counselor Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. The Human Rights Commission met last Tuesday with four of the appointed members with one position still open. They have already started working on a November, November, November event for Native American Heritage Month. They are very excited to be moving forward, and we are still looking for one more member of the Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. Any other Commission Liaison Reports tonight? Seeing none. We'll move to department head reports. I'll move from left to right. Brit, any more reports to be disseminated today? Our city attorney, Brian Lindsay, any report?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Brian, Pam, you have anything?
No.
How about our finance director? Apparently not. She's passing the microphone over there. Okay. And our planning director, Jenny Bubin. Jenny?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. It's not a direct department report, but I did wanna say that I attended an event at the ITMAC recently, last week. It was a wonderful event. It was an equity summit that was hosted by Norseman, and so I wanna thank Norseman for that. I also wanted to mention that it was very well-attended, and staff were amazing. They were, it was all hands on deck. There was a lot of moving parts, and I was, I was very impressed and very grateful to have attended that, so just wanted to mention that, and thank you.
Good, thank you. Thank you very much. Any other department head reports? Please come forward. Mr. Brian Silver, our Park and Rec Director. Brian?
Good evening, Council. Last week, if you were paying attention to The Rink Live, which is a website and Facebook page that covers hockey throughout the upper Midwest, you would have noticed that we were mentioned in two separate articles. The first article that we were mentioned in had the tagline that the youth hockey championships will be played as far north as Virginia, Minnesota, as the state of Minnesota last week announced that we will officially be hosting the Bantam A State Hockey Championship Tournament this coming March. Then the second article that was written about our facility is about an event that is a little bit sooner than March. It's actually two and a half weeks from now. On October 28th, the Minnesota Wilderness will be hosting a junior hockey game at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center Saturday, the 28th, at 7:00. So we encourage everybody to come out for the first hockey game that will have adult beverages available at it in our facility. So we're excited to work with them and work with the Sawmill and our other partners in providing a great evening of entertainment. I will even encourage you to wear a Halloween costume that night before you go out to the Halloween costumes at the bar later that evening. But just want to thank the Council for their continued support of our facility and our programs. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Jody Grabenowski, our library director for a report. Jody?
Hi, Council. So the big thing you all need to remember is on Saturday, it is a solar eclipse, so just hopefully it'll be clear and you can see it. If it isn't clear, we do have events at the library, so it starts at 10:30, ends at 1:30. We will have stuff in the event room. We do have the glasses. Please don't look at the sun without the glasses. We have glasses that we did through a grant process, and we are asking people to keep them because the next one is in April of 2024. We do have storytime this week. Next week is kind of a big week just because it is MEA on the 19th and 20th, so we do have baby storytime next week. We do have CLUE after school early out. As you all know, Virginia gets out early on Wednesdays, and we have our escape room. We still have a few slots left if you wanna sign up for the escape room, and it is a CLUE escape room. There is easy and hard, so if you have young ones, you can do the easy one. And to end our CLUE week, we have the Saturday matinee of CLUE. So the following week, we have a lot of different programs happening, and there'll be some added on justice from some of our partners for events. So our website is totally up to date, and if you would like to have any questions about these events, please give us a call at 218-748-7525.
Thank you, Jody. Okay, any other department head reports? No one else in the room? We'll move on to Counselor Reports. Does any Counselor like to give a report this evening? First, we'll go from left to right. Counselor Paulson, then over to Counselor Motley, and then over to Counselor Johnson. Counselor Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have an actual report, but I just wanted to ask a question when I had said no big trucks, and we had that conversation.